We're going to call our special meeting public hearing to order at this time. Our clerk will read the roll.
Bolden.
Aye.
Boys.
Aye.
Connor.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
DeShager.
Aye.
Fusco.
Aye.
Garrett.
President.
Hannah. Kammer. Lombardo. McHittrick.
Aye.
Imobian.
Aye. Aye.
And Somerville.
Aye.
Okay. We do not have council members Hannah, Kammer, or Lombardo, but we do have a quorum.
Thank you. We do have five items up for public hearing, and our clerk will read in item number one.
Notice is hereby given that the following open comment public hearing will be held by the Council of the City of Akron on Monday, January 27, 2025, during a special meeting to be held at 5:00 PM. Resolution adopting the 2025 Capital Investment and Community Development Program, legally referred to as the Capital Investment Budget. This notice was advertised in the Akron Beacon Journal on January 11 and on the Akron City Council website beginning January 7.
Helen Tomek.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Committee members. Every year, the city administration prepares a Capital Investment and Community Development Program for city council consideration. The budget specifies the types, locations, costs, and general descriptions of the capital investments planned for implementation throughout the year. The objectives of the Capital Investment Program are to construct and rehabilitate facilities vital to the residents of the City of Akron, to encourage private investment, thereby increasing the city's tax base and annual revenues, leveraging federal, state, and private funds whenever possible to fund capital projects, and to provide capital improvements to support the long-term growth that is consistent with the city's land use and development guide plan. The 2025 Capital Investment and Community Development Program includes the following items: enhancing and maintaining existing public infrastructure, street and sidewalk improvements, improvements to parks and community centers, construction of reservoir pool and the renovations of the Reservoir Community Center, demolition of Rankin Elementarys and Goodrich Middle Schools, development of affordable housing, the purchase of vehicles for police, fire, and public services, debt service on previously financed capital projects, the completion of the East Exchange Complete Street Project, ongoing water and sewer system upgrades, and replacing the final 1,700 active lead service lines remaining in the City of Akron. The proposed 2025 Capital Investment and Community Development Program represents an investment of $368 million. Funding sources include 84.7 million of local funds, $1.7 million of regional resources, $240.9 million of State of Ohio funds, $35.5 million of federal government funds, $5 million of private resources. Planning and city staff conducted a detailed review of the capital budget on January 6 focusing on transportation, parks and recreation, public facilities, housing and community services, economic development, and miscellaneous. An additional meeting was held on Monday, January 13. That review included water and sewer capital projects needs. Per city charter, the capital budget must be passed by February 15, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open up our public hearing. Do we have anyone here in the audience who wishes to speak in favor or against? If you do, if you please stand at this time so that you may be sworn in by our clerk.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth? If so, please say "I do." Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, we're going to begin with those who wish to speak in favor of item number one.
Thanks so much. Nice to see some of you. My name is Fran Wilson. I'm a community organizer, and I shared some of my ideas through email with some of you a couple weeks ago about the budget, and thank you for those who got back and asked some questions. I appreciate that. This is my fifth year watching the capital budget. I'm a very active citizen, as you all very well know, and attending these meetings, and I appreciate us having a public hearing today because my understanding is we haven't had one for the last two years. So thank you for hosting this this year. I appreciate it. It's good for the residents to be involved. I also think the administration hosting the ward meetings was very popular, it seemed, and very effective. This $368 million budget has some really amazing things. You just covered lead. You talked about some of the road stuff. I also wanted to bring four things that I have some concerns and some questions about. And I think first is, I just spent this past weekend, I spent a couple hours at the emergency overnight shelter which houses our unhoused population when the temperature goes under a certain temperature. And I noticed that in our budget, we have the same exact dollar amount allocated from last year for this coming year. And I just want to highlight that our unhoused population has doubled or tripled in some demographics, and that that, I hope that we can start to look at bolstering. I know there's federal regulations and things that you can and can't do with some dollars, but I just wanted to highlight that as my first. My second is that housing and community services only makes up 2% of the budget. And while I understand that there's a lot of restrictions and a lot of really amazing people working on these projects, I do want to highlight that for the community, for people who don't understand the budget and don't understand some of those restrictions, that communicates that it's less of priority amid a continuing eviction crisis, a housing crisis, and a rising unhoused population. And I also want to highlight that the data from the ward meetings all point the highest percentage from citizen feedback, 34% from citizen feedback, was housing and community services. So my question and ask and hope is that 2026, we start to be a little bit more ambitious with the federal dollars and state dollars and also local and private funding sources that we go after to tackle some of these crises here at home. My third and fourth are just short, quick things. You know, I noticed that it was very interesting that 27% of our income tax will be utilized to balance, I think it was, yeah, it was $26 million of debt. I wondered if those bonds and debt, that list and kind of an update could be released to the public so the public can understand a little bit more about our debt and our bond situation. And my last and final is, I always like to know what the private dollars are. Those are people who are giving great things. I'd be interested in seeing that list be public, too. Thank you so much. I appreciate you. Take care.
Thank you so much, Fran. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
This is my first time actually sitting through the meetings about this. I'm in favor of pretty much everything. I feel like there's a missed opportunity. I know there's been talk, well, I've told you folks before that I have a background in emergency services as a volunteer firefighter. I know that there's been talk of an emergency communications vehicle, and I really want to encourage you, because it seems like that should be included in this budget. I really think that it would be a tool that would be well-used by the city. So I encourage you to consider if that's not included in that budget, maybe if there's, if it can get in that budget. So that's all I got.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor or against? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco, what is the committee's pleasure?
I'd like to pull the committee to refer this item. Kammer. Connor. Boys.
Aye.
Hannah. Thank you. Yes, we'd like to refer this item, as we had heard that February 15 is whenever the charter indicates that we must pass this. Wanted to clear up something that was stated, that we have had public hearing, I believe it's Helen Tomek. Have we had, we've had hearings in the past?
Yes. Last year, we have public hearings every year.
Okay, yeah, yeah, just to make sure that we clear that up and that that's pursuant to the charter. We're supposed to have one per year, but we always have two, as everyone knows, in the afternoon and the evening. The, also, everyone knows, I've talked to practically everybody here in terms of like some of the wishes and aspirations, if anybody has any other ideas about what they'd like to see in the budget, please let me know. We do have a little bit of time. We've reviewed with the administration, and I want to appreciate Helen Tomek and her crew, and Kyle, and everyone who works on this. It's an all-year-long project in terms of this capital budget, however, there's a lot of work that's done right beforehand, before it's presented, and there's going to be adjustments. We all know that. There always is, especially before you introduce it, whenever it's introduced and whenever it's passed, there's always things change, even within that, you know, two-month timeframe, as we all know. So with that, we still have work to be done, sharpening pencils, but then again, I also want to thank Helen again for all her work. Thanks.
Thank you.
Notice is hereby given that the following open comment public hearing will be held by the Council of the City of Akron on Monday, January 27, 2025, during a special meeting to be held at 5:00 PM. Ordinance approving the Glendale Avenue redevelopment plan. This notice was advertised in the Akron Beacon Journal on January 11 and on the Akron City Council website beginning January 7.
Kurt Mulhouser.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Council. The Glendale Avenue redevelopment area consists of two parcels occupying approximately .9 acres of land located along the north side of Glendale Avenue, immediately west of downtown Akron. The parcels are developed with two vacant commercial buildings. Of the two parcels, one is owned by the city and the other is privately owned. Zoning in the redevelopment areas U4 Commercial and UPD 40B. The UPD 40 district allows specified residential and retail uses. Existing zoning in the area will not be changed in the plan. The Glendale Avenue redevelopment plan contains a description of the properties and a statement of objectives. The establishment of the redevelopment plan gives the city the ability to utilize tax increment financing in the plan area under provisions of the Ohio Vice Code. It is in the interest of the City of Akron to provide opportunities for businesses to create jobs for the residents of the city. The proposed redevelopment plan will assist in development of parcels in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open up our public hearing. Do we have anyone here in the audience who wishes to speak in favor or against? Item number two. Seeing and hearing none, we will close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco, what is the committee's pleasure?
Yes, I'd like to pull the committee for a favorable report with suspension of the rules. Connor. Boys.
Aye.
Hannah.
Aye.
Are there any objections to suspension of the rules? Seeing and hearing none, the rules have been suspended.
Yes, thank you. Request passage this evening. I know that Mr. DeShager and the planning folks have been working together with other organizations, and believe this is good for our community. And with that, we recommend approval this evening.
Thank you. Councilman DeShager, do you have a comment?
As of last year till this year, we've had several meetings with our community to look at the great promenade that was planned for Akron back in the 1800s. And it was the promenade to connect the steps area down in Glendale all the way into downtown. It was a visionary thing at that time that would have connected Akron all the way up to where the Glendale Cemetery is today. So I want to salute progress through preservation and the work that they've done to usher in this as a plan that is going to be able to bring that vitality of the vision of long years ago back to downtown and back to the connectivity with the Oak Park neighborhood. So at this point, I just want to give kudos to the staff and everybody else, and we look forward to great things to come to put Akron back on top in that community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. The rules have been suspended, and the committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
This ordinance passes 12 to zero. Notice is hereby given that the following open comment public hearing will be held by the Council of the City of Akron on Monday, January 27, 2025, during a special meeting to be held at 5:00 PM. Ordinance authorizing a conditional use to establish a Type A daycare home at 1075 Lane Street. This notice was advertised in the Akron Beacon Journal on January 11 and on the Akron City Council website beginning January 7.
Mr. Antonucci.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of council. Martinique Tucker is requesting permission to establish a Type A child daycare home at this location. The proposed daycare home, Smart Start, would occupy both floors of the 1,148 square-foot two-story colonial house. Care would be provided for a maximum of 12 children, ranging in age from six weeks to 12 years. The days of operation are anticipated to be Monday through Friday from 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM with alternating weekends. If approved, the petitioner intends to hire one full-time assistant. The property contains a detached one-car garage, and there is on-street parking along Lane Street. The rear yard is enclosed with a chain-link fence and is a location for an outdoor play area. This Summit Lake neighborhood property is on a dead-end street, and the traffic engineer has no concerns with drop-off and pickup. This request is to move from a Type B to a Type A license will allow the petitioner more flexibility in meeting her client's daycare needs, providing quality daycare services beneficial to the entire city, and a planning staff and planning commission recommend approval subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open up our public hearing. I know our petitioner is joining us online. Martinique, can you hear us? And I think you're on mute.
Yes, I can hear.
Okay, perfect. So we're going to ask you to be sworn in by our clerk. I don't know if we have anyone here in the audience who wishes to speak in favor or against. Okay, thank you.
If you could please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth? If so, please say "I do."
I do.
Thank you.
And Martinique, you can begin with your comments.
Um, so, yeah, I would really be happy if I would be able to get approval turned to a Type A. I've been licensed four years, and I've been operating as a Type B, but I'm limited to what I can do. Like, I can't really accept more children if I'm not a Type A. And I already have everything in order, you know, with hiring and getting full-time and part-time employees on. But I'm licensed 24 hours, so I would like to be able to bring in more children and be able to meet their needs, because I have a lot of people that they come and they're like, oh, you know, I want this time and this time. And I'm like, well, I'm limited to what I can do. I can't take more than what I'm able to take. So with me being able to turn to a Type A, that would, I mean, obviously, I would be providing job opportunities to people, but then I'll be bringing more help to the community, expanding my business and growing it as well. I can't really, like, operating as a B right now, like, I've kind of done what I need to do with that. Like, now I'm at a point in business where, like, I need to scale up to the next thing. But, I mean, the, every other weekend, that's good, too, and being able to provide a care for first shift, second shift, and third shift is definitely good, because I have a lot of people that are like, oh, I don't need this shift, or I need this shift, and me being able to do more than, I have all the space that I need. So, I mean, I'm just, I'm ready to kind of, like, grow and be able to do what I need to do, because I'm kind of, I'm kind of stuck now at a standstill. Like, I'm turning down a lot of people, and they're coming to me, and I want, you know, you for the care, and I'm like, I'm sending them elsewhere because I can't, I just, so, yeah. That's it.
Well, Martinique, thank you so much. And so at this time, we're going to close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco, what is the committee's pleasure?
Yes, I'd like to pull the committee for a favorable report with suspension of the rules. Connor. Boys.
Aye.
Hannah.
Aye.
For the committee's favorable, and we're asking for suspension of the rules.
Are there any objections to suspension of the rules? Seeing and hearing none, the rules have been suspended.
Yes, thank you. We appreciate the petitioner. This really has nothing to do with the recommendation of the department or the commission or ourselves, but we understand that petitioner's organization is a gold star winner, and so they must do fantastic work. However, when considering the zoning itself, by itself, this seems, this is a very good use, that this expansion, and we would like for the group to continue to do their good work in the community and appreciate all that they do. And with that, we're recommending approval this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. The rules have been suspended, and the committee's report is favorable. Oh, I am so sorry. Councilman Garrett, I didn't see your hand there.
Thank you, Madam President. I just would like to take opportunity to commend the young lady. To reach the gold level is an amazing accomplishment, and it's not easily done. So I would like for my colleagues to know that that's a standard that most people don't reach, and for her to be able to offer that to that area, that community sends a powerful message, and I strongly support you, and congratulations on that effort.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Garrett. The rules have been suspended, and the committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
This ordinance passes 12 to zero. Notice is hereby given that the following open comment public hearing will be held by the Council of the City of Akron on Monday, January 27, 2025, during a special meeting to be held at 5:00 PM. Ordinance authorizing a conditional use to establish a tire sales and repair shop at 1475 Maslin Road. This notice was advertised in the Akron Beacon Journal on January 11 and on the Akron City Council website beginning January 7.
Mr. Antonucci.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of council. James Alstrom is requesting permission to establish a tire sales and repair shop at this location. Property contains two buildings. The main building, an approximate 2,000-square-foot brick structure, is centered within the parcel, and 875-square-foot metal accessory building is located close to the northeast corner of the property. The main building will be utilized as the main shop, where work will be performed and for the selling and repairing of tires. The accessory structure will be utilized for storage. The front section of the property is paved with access from curb cuts along Maslin Road. Petitioners state the hours of operation would be Monday through Saturday from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and the petitioner states that three to five new employees will be hired for the business. The former gas station constructed in 1953 has been vacant for many years. The proposed reuse of the property as a tire sales and repair shop is consistent with other surrounding businesses in the area. The planning staff believes the size of the lot and the buildings are sufficient to allow for interior auto repair work and the proper storage of tires, and both planning staff and planning commission recommend approval subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open up our public hearing. Do we have anyone here in the audience who wishes to speak in favor or against? Seeing and hearing none, we will close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco, what is the committee's pleasure?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I'd like to pull the committee for a favorable report with suspension of the rules. Connor.
Aye.
Boys.
Aye.
Hannah.
Aye.
Thank you. For the committee is favorable, and we're asking for passage.
Are there any objections to suspension of the rules? Seeing and hearing none, the rules have been suspended.
Yes, thank you. I know the ward council representative has been involved with this particular conditional use request for this property and recommendation, based on the recommendation from planning and the commission, we're recommending approval this evening. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you so much. The rules have been suspended. Okay. Thank you so much. The rules have been suspended and the committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
This ordinance passes 12 to 0. Notice is hereby given that the following open comment public hearing will be held by the council of the city of Akron on Monday, January 27, 2025, during a special meeting to be held at 5:00 PM. Ordinance authorizing a conditional use to establish a type A daycare home at 934 Reed Avenue. This notice was advertised in the Akron Beacon Journal on January 11 and on the Akron City Council website beginning January 7.
Mr. Antonucci?
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. Josephine White is requesting permission to establish a type A child daycare home at this location. The proposed daycare home, Circle of Life Child Enrichment Center, would mainly occupy the main floor and basement area of the 1,056 square foot, one-story house. Care would be provided for a maximum of 12 children, ranging in age from six weeks to 12 years. The days of operation will be from Monday through Friday from 7:00 AM to 6:15 PM. There will be no overnight stays. If approved, the petitioner intends to hire two full-time assistants. The southeast corner of the property contains a detached one-car garage. And there's also on-street parking along Reed Avenue. And the rear yard contains space for an outdoor play area, which is enclosed with chain link fencing. This property is well-maintained and the traffic engineer has no concerns with drop-off and pickup. This request to move from a type B to a type A license will allow the petitioner more flexibility in meeting her clients' daycare needs, providing quality daycare services beneficial to the entire city. And the planning staff and planning commission recommend approval, subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open up our public hearing. I do know that our petitioner, Joe White, is online with us. Do we have anyone here in the audience wishing to speak in favor or against? If not, Joe, we'll just have you to be sworn in by our clerk.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you could begin with your comments.
Thank you. Thank you again for having me. I am currently a type B provider. I've been licensed since March. I am looking to move to a type A. I actually have the children ready to start because their younger siblings or family members are already enrolled. And so, after questions about, you know, wanting to enroll with me, you know, I decided to take the steps and hopefully get approval to move from type B, because type B, I only have space for six. So, for type A, I'll have room for 12. I am looking to just be a support system for the community. It can be challenging sometimes for working families to find someplace where their little ones are safe and learning as well. So, I am excited at the opportunity to be able to expand the reach with the day-to-day services, care and education for children in our community, in our city. I've been in the field for 30 years, mostly working for other organizations. And now, just excited about this next journey, hopefully with my own business and my own school and program for young children.
Joe, thank you so much. At this time, we're going to close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco, what is the committee's pleasure?
I'd like to pull the committee for a favorable report with suspension of the rules. Connor?
Hi.
Boys?
Hi.
Hannah?
Hi.
Are there any objections to suspension of the rules? Seeing and hearing none, the rules have been suspended.
Thank you. I owe Josephine White an apology. She is the gold star organization here. I had misspoke. I thought we just had one today. But, and I think it's important to point that out, although I will ask my colleagues not to take that into consideration while considering a zoning conditional use request. We should not take that into consideration. However, I do want to publicly thank her for her commitment to the community, to the youth of our community, and to the parents of our community and the good work that she's done. However, though, on the zoning side of it, she has done a good job. I know that the planning department and commission and the committee is now recommending approval on this item. And so, wish her nothing but the best moving forward and appreciate all she does. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Councilman Garrett, did you have a comment? Did you want to say something to Joe?
Absolutely. Miss Joe, I'd like to congratulate you on your accomplishments. That's amazing. Your 30 years in the business speaks volumes. Our children are so much better when they're able to, to be able to stay in their own community, in their environment. And so, what you're doing is phenomenal. Continue the good work. You have my full support. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. The rules have been suspended and the committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
This ordinance passes 12 to 0.
If there's nothing else coming before this, committee, is there a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
No objections? Meeting adjourned.
Council will meet in regular session at 6:30. Thank you.